All right, I call the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee meeting of June 25th, 2009 to order. Will Lomond take her please call the roll?
Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a quick announcement before we get into the agenda. We have a group of consultants here to talk about our Thorndale Corridor Plan. We will go out of order, we will take them first, have them give their presentation. I will then recess the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee so that we can take public comment, after which point then we will open up the, my committee meeting and move on as regularly scheduled. So depending on how long our consultants go, I mean that's how long before we can get to public meeting, but we'll push it for you guys because I know you have lots to talk about. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the May 28th, 2009 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
Okay.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
One abstention, motion carries. The presentation by the Lakota Group for the update of the Thorndale Corridor. Before I hand this over to, I guess it'll be John Lamott as the leader of the group this evening, just to kind of remind everybody that the purpose here is to see this revised presentation and ultimately for this committee to vote on and approve this as the presentation, as the master plan for what we'll be doing up on the Thorndale area. So with that, I will hand it to Mr. Lamott.
Again, I'm John Lamott, I'm with the Lakota Group. Daniel Grove, my associate here is with the Lakota Group, he's the Vice President with our company and has been the project manager. Ron Adip Bose is with S.P. Friedman and Company right here. Steve Freeman, President of S.P. Friedman and Company, and Brian Ferber with Trans Systems. Those of you just getting a first look at this, what we're going to do is just a quick overview to get everybody back to where we are, or get everybody up to where we are today, and then give you the overview of the latest planned draft that you have in front of you. As you know, we started working as a team for the city. Our firm is looking at the land use, physical conditions, urban design, the development aspects of this from the physical side. Steve and Ron Adip are looking at it from the market and economic side, and Brian is looking at the future potential of the Thorndale Corridor from the civil engineering and the transportation engineering and planning side as well. So the city should be commended, they're doing a very comprehensive approach to what is the future of the Thorndale Road Corridor, both what are the issues we need to deal with to make it better, but also what are the tremendous opportunities which you'll see in a minute as to what could be done in the future for development. I'm going to just quickly tell you again what we're going to do. We'll talk quickly about the process, so those of you new can get plugged in and those of you have been in it can refresh. As you know, we've done a master plan report that's been up on the website, and these are the different areas I just mentioned that we worked on. The idea was unlock some of the thinking and development opportunities up there in the corridor, and also look at the positives and not just negatives. There's not a lot of negatives up there even though one area is needing redevelopment, but we find in that redevelopment zone some really great opportunities. And then we have a group discussion yet tonight for you to really kind of get into it. Each council member commissioner got a first draft of the report of the master plan. This is a compendium of our work to date. We put it in a notebook format so we can add and subtract if we make corrections and things that you see, but it's also going to be used not only as a guide for the city, but a marketing book and a development book, and it's got about 10 different purposes once we get it out on the street. Next, oops, let me get this one here. This is the process to date, we started in October. We've had a lot of meetings with a lot of really important people to find out what's going on in the area. One of the key things that's come out of this is that we're answering a lot of questions, both for you and for us, about what is the future roadway going to be like? It's no longer just a line on a map that says O'Hare Port to Route 53 and this is where it's going to be. We actually know how it's going to lay out, what are the ramps, how is it going to work, and how's it going to benefit Thorndale Corridor and the city of Wooddale. We've met twice with IDOT, we've met with RTA, we've had good thorough review of the state of the corridor, meaning what are the conditions out there? We worked over these concepts that we came up with several different approaches, and now we're down to the master plan report and here tonight for the final reviews. To refresh everybody, this is the study area. You've got the edge of the airport as it is today, the squaring out of the airport as it will be tomorrow when it finishes the expansion, and then you see the straight runway here. Eventually there'll be a couple more of these straight runways to kind of clear up some of the clutter and confusion in O'Hare, make things move better, but the number one thing will be the future western terminus here on the west side. So we as Chicago landers, as regional people, will not have to all go to the east, we'll be able to spread the load out and get into the west and the east, and more importantly for people west of the airport, they'll be able to get directly right into the airport without having to go all the way around. The other thing is then from that terminus through the Thorndale Corridor to 290 Route 53 to the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway, that is what we mean, the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway extension. It's kind of funny that we say it's the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway that doesn't go to Elgin, doesn't go to O'Hare. Well, it's coming and it's going to happen, and it's really on the high radar screen of our transportation officials in the state and at the federal level. So this line on the map is no more a line, it's going to be a real expressway connection. Our study area is the north side roughly of Wooddale, picking up most of the business park areas on the north and south side of Thorndale, and the Salt Creek Golf Course, and then the regular neighborhoods, the residential neighborhoods in downtown to the south. So it's the Thorndale Corridor area. You take a little closer look, and we've got the three, I mean the four quadrants, we've been talking about what's going on in the northwest quadrant, north of Thorndale and west of Wooddale, the southwest quadrant, the southeast quadrant, and the northeast quadrant, if you look closely, that's really the city's border. So this is outgrowth here, and we've been looking closely at what the frontage is along Wooddale. So we're looking at what is the area today, what are the needs today, and what could it be tomorrow? This is not going to happen overnight, but can we take incremental steps to really set the stage for an incredible new development you'll see in a minute? We also got into with Trans Systems help, all the roadway situations, not only the right-of-way here, this is the right-of-way, the land area that was reserved for the expressway, all of this land right through here that is already set, no more right-of-way is needed by the state to get this going. We also looked at then our local streets and our main arteries to see how are we going to connect to the future expressway and then how we can set the stage for future development. This is a conceptual drawing of the expressway. Again, it starts to show a real picture of what's going to happen, there's no more speculation what it really could be, and the Route 53 connection is further to the west, and then we start, here's Salt Creek, we start into the Wooddale section through Wooddale Road and over to Illinois Route 83, Bussie Highway. So there'll be a full interchange at Bussie and Route 83, a full one at Wooddale, but because of the distances here, there'll actually be frontage roads that you'll zipper in and come back up on the ramp. So if you get off, to get to Wooddale Road, you'll go through that intersection and come over and get off here. You can get off from the west at the, immediately at Wooddale Road, and the same thing, the frontage road will connect back over Route 83. We found that this opened a tremendous opportunity for the development area that Lively could be a centerpiece, almost a collector, central arterial to serve the southeast quadrant, which I'll talk more about in a minute. We took a big picture and a very small picture look at transit for the area. Here's our study area, here's the overall Wooddale City area, the future western terminal at O'Hare. There's been discussion of bringing the blue line across the airport to connect over to that western terminal. That was an option that's been studied for years. It's still somewhat conceptually on the table, but that would be if the CTA brought transit to, through the airport and to the western terminal. And then in blue along I-90, along the tollway here, is the Starline service that's being looked at right now from a feasibility standpoint, some form of transit that would go within the right-of-way of the tollway, would go from somewhere around O'Hare, either on the east side, the west side or both, down the tollway and out to Hoffman Estates is the first leg. So you can see how close that is to our study area. There's also been discussion to bring another leg down 53, 290, across Thorndale Avenue and right into the O'Hare Western Terminal. And then we've also got a localized, and I want to use localized with a big capital L because DuPage County has been looking at a bus rapid transit corridor through east-west, north-south, and up potentially Bussie, Route 83, for an on-the-ground bus system that might be just regular buses lined up, or some sort of a connected bus rapid transit system. So the county's been looking at how do we move people in the county, the state and the regional agencies have been looking at how do we move people through the whole region. The good news is, a lot of roads lead to Wooddale, and we want to capitalize on that even if it's not going to come for a couple of years. We did an extensive market study. Steve and Ron Adip and their folks went through office, retail, hotel, and some support housing as to what could be the future of the area. Right now, it's mostly what we call a business park, light industrial, and so the idea is what could we do as far as a ripple effect, an impact off of the airport? If you visualize the east side of the airport where Rosemont is today, we're thinking what kind of that type of development could happen, but only in a more planned way rather than an organic, just kind of it grew into the open spaces over east of the airport. So we did an extensive amount of research, compared other areas around airports around the country. The primary uses we looked at then were multi-tenant office, build-to-suit office, meaning some sort of an office building built for a corporation. The multi-tenant office would be for multiple corporations in one building. Hotel and retail service. There wasn't a lot of retail market because we didn't have a lot of rooftops around the corridor, but it was more of a need for retail and commercial and services to support our corporate zone. The hotel, tremendous amount of potential over time, possibly six mid and upscale hotels over a 20, 25-year period with a projection out to 2025. Just imagine where you've seen hotels near airports, we've got room to do it, we've got strategic corners, and we've got a potential market once the airport opens up and the economy starts picking back up. As far as office spaces, one thought was at least one or two wildcard or, you know, build-to-suit, big corporate headquarters that could come here because we've got the land area, we've got the key locations. And then the big news would be to switch from an industrial land use approach to office, possibly getting up almost to a million square feet in a land area that would need 25 to 30 acres. So instead of the bigger box warehouse, assembly, research-type facility, these would be more office buildings with hotels and retail supporting it. A little bit of retail then mixed in, up to maybe 30,000 with a couple of really nice restaurants. And then we also discussed from a policy standpoint the potential to bring housing into the equation, not single-family homes, not a lot of freestanding residential, but residential mixed into the equation of the overall development. That adding, that in plus the transit would make it one of the most unique in the country. Truly a walk-to-work situation where somebody could be in an apartment or condominium, walk down the street and go right into their office, building a hotel or their shops. So the idea is, in the right mix, in the right locations, let's bring that into the equation. A closer look at the area, the determination was the northeast quadrant had a lot of newer, more modern business park buildings, there wasn't a lot of land for us to work with up there. The idea would be that someday at the corner at Wooddale Road, some reorganization of those uses and maybe some better corner hotel, restaurant uses would come in. The northwest quadrant also was the newer one, the newer area, the more modern area that has a lot more of the amenities and better-looking landscaping and newer buildings, buildings with the higher ceilings and loading areas off the street. So there wasn't a lot of development potential, there's a little bit of vacant area back in here, but the idea was that pretty much needs to kind of stay the same. We got to the southwest corner, found a couple of vacant areas, starting to show some potential for infill, a couple of vacant buildings, the HSBC campus has potential for us there, but most of the buildings in the core are fairly modern, again, not needing to major, do major redevelopment at this time. But when we get to the southeast quadrant, the whole area can really be considered a redevelopment opportunity, and that means either for new road connections, new open space, new buildings, new things in that area. The buildings are older, they're lower, they're not that modern, they're loading off the street, which trucks break and block up the street that way, they don't have a lot of room for expansion, they don't have a lot of room for parking. So the idea is, let's rethink this whole quadrant for the future because it's right up on the expressway frontage, a mile and a half, five minutes down the road from the new western terminal when it comes. So you look at this area here in gray, that is the right-of-way that they'll build the expressway in. You can see the potential connection right off the expressway at Lively, Wooddale, and eventually we'll talk about 83 in a minute, and then vacant buildings potentially available with the asterisks, some vacant lots, and then just overall, over time, bringing these buildings into a larger redevelopment approach. So let's take a look at the plan. This is the plan. The idea is to create a corporate Main Street along the frontage of the expressway, to take full advantage of the exposure and frontage of the expressway, and create a whole new mix of uses here, and then consolidate and open up new business park opportunities to the south. This circle you see, the two circles, this is a quarter-mile walking radius from a potential transportation center. So here's Wooddale Road, center may be there someday, there's Wooddale, or Route 83 may be there, or Lively. We showed an optimal location between the two. Again, if you think about being in the center of the expressway, going to a transit station out of O'Hare, getting off, and then crossing into some sort of a open glassy airy transit center that then would serve all this area. This is a quarter-mile walking distance, this is a half-mile walking distance. Most of this redevelopment would be in a very short, easy walk to future transit. And again, the expressway would come in, they're thinking about after that what kind of transit would come in at the center of the expressway. With the Main Street, what we did is we connected all the way through, established a walking street, and many more corporations these days are looking for opportunities to be mixed with other uses so they're not isolated in big office parks with ponds and geese and no amenities and no place to have a sandwich or no place to go. So the idea here is that this is mixed use, corners for new office buildings, hotels mixed in, apartments, condos, shops, restaurants all mixed in as well. The backsides would be parking decks to accommodate this density, but the parking decks wouldn't be right up on the street, they'd be behind the building, so the street is very walkable and very attractive and very usable. We also showed, and we're going to show this in a minute, potential locations for the bus rapid transit lines. If the county's lines became established, we could bring them up 83, bring them down through, down Wooddale Road with stops right in front of all the buildings in our area. This is a closer look. Now imagine you just took off from O'Hare on one of those east-west runways, you just flew over the western terminal, and you're looking west down the future expressway. You can see this area from here to here is the right-of-way, this would be the ramp coming off, either turn in to Lively or go to Wooddale Road, or continue on out west. In the center, right in the center, is where they would be looking to put a transit line. So that transit line would serve the county and the region, and then we would need to get our commuters across and into the development. Here's our new Main Street on the west, I mean, I'm sorry, on the east, looking west. This is Wooddale Road, and this is the potential of bringing business and development together, having synergy, making it more viable and feasible for the long run. And in the back, you can see the business park and then another concept we have. This, take a closer look, and what we have here then is the expressway, a potential transit link across parking decks that would serve these uses without having giant, big, large parking lots, parking decks that would serve Wooddale commuters that could park here and ride and get on the transit, a transit green, great corners created for office development, great central spaces for hotels, apartments and condos above the stores, even a condo complex. This area picks up all of that program that we talked about that S.P. Friedman and Company found as far as future development, and adds more for future growth as the area becomes hopefully one of the most popular corporate locations in the area. You can see Route 83 here, a wildcard kind of build-to-suit, a condo complex, corner office buildings on Lively, corner at the Transit Plaza, and a corner here at Wooddale Road. You can see the future more modern, more efficient business park, roads that are linked in a grid system, you'll see that in a minute, and then in the back, a regional sports and recreation center. Another view from the south, this is Central and Lively connecting up, here's Wooddale Road, future Main Street, the business park and a much more efficient street system. We've got the loading docks internalized, parking with plenty of room to get people off the street with expansion room, and then we created in here an expansion of the park system to create a regional recreation center that would be feeding the restaurants and hotels in the weekends, but be available for Wooddale residents all week and all day. So the idea would be to bring middle across, which you'll see in a minute on the blowups. And this is looking from Wooddale east through the new Main Street. This is a sketch of what this Main Street can look like. It's like Back to the Future, it's like the old way of doing things, but it's newer because people want to get the uses mixed and more synergistic today. So you're basically telling a corporate entity, bring your office building in, and there'll be a hotel a half block down, there'll be shops, there'll be a bus line someday in the middle, some sort of a transit line. You can sit, you can go up and down, go to the restaurants, this might be a freestanding restaurant, but wide enough streets that have a real nice streetscape and a common street wall rather than parking in front, parking back, parking on the side, we hold the street wall with the buildings. And that's the same coming up into Lively. This is Lively coming up into the center of the site, create another gateway in with nice green parkways, nice setbacks there, but we hold the street wall along the Main Street. This is a view potentially of the entry under the expressway at Lively, so that you're coming from the airport, this is your car, you're going to turn left into Lively, big open gateway into it, we bring the brand of the city there, the brand of the name of the corporate Main Street right there, right center on the whole development, and people can come in the middle or they can come in on the main arteries. So you take a closer look at the plan, and this is the street system that we developed as a team with city staff and with the city officials. So the idea would be Wooddale Road as a strong major arterial with the major intersection, Route 83, strong, but still not sure if we can do left turns here, which we'll get to in a minute. We bring the Main Street across, we then connect Lively and Central so it's more of a straight route instead of the big kink that's in there now, much more efficient. We create these internal loop streets, and we extended middle through the north end of the school and park site. I think we nicked two ball fields, two ball fields. The idea is to connect the two so that you've got a regular intersection, traffic can move between and through, and what we hit here in open space, we created all kinds of new opportunities for more soccer fields, ball fields, softball fields, that would not only make up for what we would change, but would expand the potential open space so you could bring tournaments into the city. People could come here for their soccer, their tennis, their basketball, their baseball, and feed into the restaurants and create a real central space. We then also located a potential 100, 150,000 square foot recreation center where you could do the indoor stuff during the cold months that also would be there for the tournaments. This is a close-up of Main Street on the top of the drawing, so here's Wooddale Road, here's the future intersection, Wooddale Road will go underneath the expressway. The expressway will be above Wooddale and above Bussie, but it'll be bermed up so that it's greened up on the sides. It's not going to be a big giant structure like a New Jersey Turnpike that we all have in our minds. We have been told by IDOT that they need to get over these roads rather than under them for cost, for efficiency, and to get through the creek system, but also it'll be greened up on the edges. So what we did here is we created the Main Street, median down the middle, nice stops for future transit, the medians can be put in, and someday the transit stops come when that starts to happen, you've got a nice circulation from one side to the other. We've brought all the buildings up to the street, got a little surface parking so you can get in quickly to hotels and restaurants, the bigger overflow long-term parking in the decks, and then there's your two corner office buildings, and you've created several office opportunities and hotel opportunities. Here's our wildcard, as Steve calls it, for a future build-to-suit on the east side. If you look a little closer, this is Wooddale Road, a nice green parkway, identifiable gateways that really brand the area, two flagship office buildings, a restaurant, the parking deck pod in the back, nice easy drop-offs and access, not confusing, not complex, and not really jammed together. This is the middle piece right here, hotel, a couple of restaurants, some apartments above retail, very walkable, and you're right within the zone of all these uses, and then this is the Lively intersection as well. So green on the edges, beautiful streetscape in the middle, and we create our new Main Street. Here's a close-up of the transit area. Beautiful turnabout court area, open space for the community to come to, buses could pull in, drop off, and come out, you can do kiss-and-ride, you can pull in the decks and get right to the transit center, and basically we're reserving a planned area for future transit. And then you can see, these are some pictures of Toronto, Canada, right Daniel, and Brian, and Trans Systems found these. This is the hottest new system out there. In fact, we were at an APA meeting today and they were talking about this system up in Canada. And the idea is that it's a center-oriented bus, one or two or three vehicles together with nice clean stops that serve a lot of density and uses up and down the street. So we can create the street, and then you can bring the system in as needed, but you've got to think ahead to make sure you're setting the stage. So this could be a new office building in Wooddale, this could be a hotel, some restaurants, and transit's right down the middle of the street. That's, I guess, one of the hottest right now in the country, or in North America as far as transit. And then a close-up of our condo cluster. Now we've got enough office buildings and hotels to match that market study projection, we have room left over to keep creating this Main Street. So the idea would be, office on the corners, we brought a condo cluster in here. Can you imagine telling a corporation, please come locate here, we've got this whole list of amenities, people can live nearby, hotels and business nearby, where are you going to find all of that except being in a downtown Chicago? We then did some guidelines, initial guidelines, these have to be fleshed out with more standards and details as another phase, but the idea would be, is the guardians of the area, is the planners and guiders of the area, that the plant commission zoning board and the city council would really set the framework for somebody to come in and fill up the development sites. If someone said, I want to put a gas station right on this corner, no, that's one of our 100% corners, there's other locations for gas stations. If someone said, I want to put a big surface parking lot in my building back here, no, we're trying to create our Main Street, you can get the buildings up and get visibility, but you've got to hold the line, and we put the mixed uses in between. If a 5,000 square foot restaurant came and said, I want to put a great restaurant up, you've got to infill in between, not take the key corner where we want the office building. So this is an initial framework that defines what the master plan's all about, to help give you guidance in the next, in the coming months, and then designers and planners can plan to that. Same thing in the central green, it really just sets up a framework, you can fill the buildings in, adjust as you need, and it pretty much gives a very clear guidance. Now looking closer at the business park, this is the Main Street up here, here's Wooddale Road, we extended Middle Drive, connected the Boulevard, those two ball fields were brought down in here, we've created a lot more great open space opportunities. This isn't what's called programmed yet, the park district and city folks need to look at how many of these types of fields, but tournaments are so big across America now, whether it's basketball, football, golf, I mean, baseball, golf, soccer, that you can do all kinds of great outdoor stuff. Got a little bit of parking, but a lot of parking on weekends in the business park zone right across the street, and a great corner building that people can come and use for fitness during the day, as well as on the weekends to feed all the restaurants and hotels. This is then a little guideline for the business park zone. You're really setting up a very efficient frame, but you want a nice green edge around there, you don't want the trucks loading off the edge, you want them into a shared service zone, very efficient, you want the buildings to hold the street wall there to use the maximum amount of development land efficiently. You can do 20,000 square foot buildings, 40, 80, you can get up to 160, so there's modules here that you can use to fit the right approach. We talked to one of the landowners and a couple other people about the potential for the area to do international showrooms. Companies that want to show their product off to the American market can get right out of the airport, come into Wooddale, get into the business park, show their stuff, stay in the hotels, and really kind of add another dimension to the business park zone. And then the recreation center a little closer. This is three options for the Route 83 intersection. Talking with Trans Systems, with city engineers and planners, and then with the IDOT folks. Basically today, here's Route 83 Bussie Road, here is a business that's active and working right there on the corner, and they have a driveway that comes out on the Route 83. It's got a right-in and a right-out only, you can't make the lefts. Now as the intersection here gets more designed by IDOT, they're going to let us know what kind of spacing we have. This is too close to the ramps to do lefts in here. So right now, this business can stay there as long as it needs to be, but it's a good development site. The second step would be, well, if we could get a partial intersection, we might be able to do a right-in and a right-out, but connect it all the way back to the Main Street, and then someday that site may be redeveloped. The ideal would be to get a full intersection so people on Bussie can come right in to the development. That would require some purchase of properties to the south, but a much bigger development site would be created, and you'd have a full access intersection. IDOT asked us to keep all three of these on the table as they study and show us their spacing. Again, this is long-term because we have an active business on that corner. This is the HSBC site, this is Wooddale Road, this is the middle, the middle today and middle extended to the east, and here's the school. The idea is HSBC is a one-story campus, very tight with parking. If they stay there, fine, if it gets reused, fine, but there may be a need or a potential to make a more denser campus out of it, so we consolidate the buildings into three, four story buildings and consolidate the parking. We also thought the potential for residential here might be there. It might be a situation where we have condos and apartments mixed in with the corporate Main Street, but that this would create a great condominium, I mean, I'm sorry, a row home or town home complex across from the school, close to jobs, close to transit, and so we kept both on the table at your guidance as to where we want to leave that as a long-range option. We also looked west of Wooddale Road, some of the, Alderman had indicated, now what, if we really get going, not even what, when we really get going, what if we then extend west of Wooddale Road? The idea is initially to stay east of Wooddale and concentrate our activity where transit would go, where the access would be cleaned up, but someday, hopefully, there'd be enough action that you could jump west, pick up these properties, and we did a design for how that might look to the west. So the same corporate Main Street idea, hold the So the same corporate Main Street idea, hold the street wall, mix in the restaurants, hotels, put the parking in the back, buffer it and green it from the outside world and just extend that Main Street further west. So it was a great suggestion, it fit right in, it's a good long-range vision. If things really start cooking, we could, we could look to the west in the long range. We also did a very conceptual look at potential identity. The mission is not to pick the sign so much, it's the idea of we've got a brand and identify the area as a special place. So the city of Wooddale is a special place and then within that, we want to really create a district feel. So you come into somewhere that is really planned. This is one idea, that we have the city as the overall brand and our corporate Main Street name, a little bit more of a high-tech. This is a little bit more of an art deco. And you can see we have major gateways at major corners, they could be vertical, they could be horizontal and then minor gateways at the smaller corners, but the idea is to tie the whole area together. And then another brand, different, more techie look. Again, the idea is to create that signage system and that signage hierarchy. And then we're at the point now, not only to have the plan, but we're talking about what are priority projects? What do we do next? Because the aldermen are very much into, let's get this implemented and what are the steps? A, B and C. A couple of things came out of this little diagram and that is, where should we start focusing? And one of the approaches would be, can we really start working with I-DOT on extending Lively and getting that lined up in the proper way? Even if it's just a piece of Lively, we keep setting the stage beyond the expressway zone that we can create this development. So whether it's a piece down to Main Street or goes all the way, that's a good project, that's a priority project. The establishment of Main Street, whether a developer comes in and gets it going or you want to get it going, that's something to consider, get the kind of the skeleton in there of the Main Street. You can also see that there's all kinds of different ways to phase this. We're not dependent on any one property and any one corner because the beautiful thing is the way these properties line up, they're almost all in a grid system themselves. So this corner could be phase one, across the street, that big warehouse could be phase one. These corners at Lively could start with just two or three little properties that are needing to be picked up. The other corners could be started. So I think there was some concern initially, do we need to do the whole thing in order to make this work? We don't. The good news is we can do it incremental at either your pace or if the developers are knocking at the door. We also think that working on the extension of Middle Drive gets us two things. It gets a better link today because if there's business people in the room, there were those discussing that they need to make these east-west connections better for their deliveries and services, but it also would trigger the establishment of the bigger regional recreation complex. And that that's its own entity and its own project that could start soon. And then just quickly, looking at the potential phasing, because again, I think we want everybody, especially if you're new to the, new to the process, to see that this isn't a wholesale, wipe it out, start all over. It's incremental growth in the right location, at the right time and at your pace or the property owner's pace. So here's the existing Lively and Central Avenue. And you can see, we're going to try and straighten it up right in here. So one little project could be extend Lively, it's got to be extended under the expressway, but extend it down to our future Main Street. These three, four properties could be assembled and you could start that corner. This little piece is done, your parkways are in, your gateways there, an office building and a restaurant could start. The rest of those streets don't have to change. Then eventually, you take Seavert and you could add a few more properties and get to Central, you break Seavert here and you expand to the west, is one opportunity. Eventually, this Lively piece can go away. You can see if we're over at Wooddale Road, there's a vacant property right there, start the Main Street, get them going, don't have to wait. Add a few more properties, extend Main Street, you're almost up to Central and go to the south to the big warehouse, you can infill easily to make that work as well. So the good news is we have three or four, five good phasing options. And then this is the general strategy areas for implementation. I'm not going to go into real specifics, but the idea is a lot of communication and coordination has happened. Your city staff and city officials should be commended at how much they're linked into and are involved in the process with the county, the state and the feds on working on the area. Right now, everything is coming together. So being at the table as we are with the state on the expressway and the airport is critical. So you guys have been at the table and you're almost in the lead among other communities on doing that. And then starting to bring in the private sector so that more and more of the business and property owners can see the potential, they can see when they can or cannot change, but how they could work. So reaching out more to the private sector. We need eventually in the next phase to look at a redevelopment approach. Is it a master developer? Is it quadrants of the quadrant?